Así no, mira.
Order of Order please, can I get woke up please?
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Councilmember José Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco. She just joined in. Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Mari Wekannan Jr.
Present.
Vice Mayor Matías Rosales.
Present.
Mayor Gerardo Sánchez.
Present.
Mayor Yavacor.
Thank you, Council Mayor Wekannan could listen with federal allegiance please.
Sir, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Mari, let's see here, I will now introduce the motion and go into executive session. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, I was in favor.
Aye.
I was against. Motion carries, thank you. Melissa, are we ready or are we moving into the other room?
Yes.
Are you going to regular council session?
To move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is against? Motion carries. I will now adjourn. We have a motion, okay?
They have a motion to...
To go into...
To every... Go back into special session, the special meeting.
I already passed it.
There's no action item here. We just need the agreement.
It was just direction, I mean it was just discussion.
There will be an open session.
You see there's a motion, that we have to pass a motion?
That was the motion to go back into special session in the public, not at executive session.
Yeah, there's no separate item on this. When we get to work session, there'll be an item on it to discuss in open session then.
Okay, thank you. I will now adjourn.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is against? Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, can you please give us a minute to set up for the work session?
Yes, yes, you got five, you got five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Out of order, can I roll call, please?
Councilmember Gloria Torres?
Present.
Councilmember José Ponce?
Present.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco?
Present.
Councilmember Luz Cabrera?
Present.
Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr.?
Present.
Vice Mayor Matías Rosales?
Present.
Mayor Gerardo Sánchez?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, uh, first and foremost, thank you everyone for showing up and for being present at our work session. We're gonna go ahead and go with side number two, A. Presentation followed by discussion and possible direction staff on all matters regarding the public safety, personal retirement system, unfunded liability and related options for consideration. Mark Reader, uh, manage, uh, managing director, uh, Stifel?
Yes.
Mark?
Good evening, um, mayor, uh, council members. Before, um, Mark Reader starts with, uh, his presentation, I just want to give a little bit of overview of what, uh, we, uh, call him to give this presentation. As you might recall, several weeks back, I presented the pension policy to council. And in that meeting, uh, meeting, we learned that, uh, PSPRS, uh, funding status is in, in average, um, seventy percent, uh, police is sixty-five percent, and fire is at eighty-six percent. At that meeting, I mentioned that our objective is to achieve a hundred percent status. In looking for alternatives, uh, we learned that, uh, through bond issuance, um, it seems, uh, an attractive alternative. Mr. Reader will give us a presentation and, uh, we will be able to learn if this can be an alternative for the city to achieve, uh, this goal. Thank you, Mr. Reader, for being here.
Well, thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Uh, it's our pleasure to be in front of you again. I think, as most of you know, I've had the privilege of working with your city for a number of years on your financings and your refinancings, and I've really enjoyed that, enjoyed working with you. Uh, I wanted to introduce my, my colleague Claude Lockhart on the phone. Claude, could you bring up the PowerPoint? Would you share the screen on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Claude. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a, a presentation here to talk about pensions, uh, specifically police and fire, uh, pensions owed by the city to the retirees. We know you're familiar with the police and fire pensions. It is, uh, in most cities', uh, case, the largest debt, the largest like, many cases, on, on our balance sheet to repay. And, uh, to make a long story short, you, you all are in the eight million dollar range. I'm gonna walk you through that here in a moment. Uh, unfunded in the amount of approximately eight million dollars, bear with me, uh, that had nothing to do with, uh, with really anything currently going on, but just to give you a quick history lesson because it may be helpful. A lot of our clients have asked us, how, how in the world do we have such a large unfunded liability that's been on our balance sheet and that we've been paying for, for years? This is for the tier one and the tier two employees, okay? And back in the seventies, the legislature adopted a policy to give the retirees fifty percent of the return on the pension fund above nine percent. Essentially, what happened as a result of that, there were some unintended consequences for our Arizona cities and towns. It's called a permanent benefit increase. And they passed that law, and, uh, it, it resulted in, unfortunately, in an attempt to achieve those higher rates of return in the pension plan, they invested in some risky assets, which resulted in some significant unfunded liabilities, uh, primarily done during the great recession, if you recall. And so I just wanted to kind of share a little bit of background with, with the city council relative to your liability, the history of it, why we are where we are. Now, if you remember, we had a constitutional amendment through proposition one twenty-four and one twenty-five a couple of years ago. That created the tier three plan, so that now when you hire new officers, they're all tier three employees, which is not as expensive as a plan in the retirement plan. So we're gonna focus, uh, this, this evening only on the tier one and the tier two employees hired by the city over the years and the, and the related liability, uh, and the related debt, the constitutionally protected debt of that liability, and share with you some ideas on how you might be able to address it versus not doing anything at all. So, start with that, and, uh, Claude, if you can take me to the next page, I appreciate that. And mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause a few times because we know this is a very, uh, weighty subject, a very complicated subject, and I'm gonna walk you through uh, information which I trust is very helpful to you, but I also want to make sure that before Claude and I are done, we answer all your questions. So this is a slide that we've been sharing with our clients. Again, this is the, uh, state of Arizona, tier one and tier two unfunded police and fire pensions, pension liability unfunded around the state. So it's about thirteen billion with a B in our state. And you can see our cities and towns are unfunded, this is in the aggregate, this is all, all eighty-seven, eighty-eight cities in our state at about seven point, I'm gonna round if you don't mind, in the green chart here, uh, seven point four billion unfunded around the state. So you're not alone, all of our cities are dealing with this. Uh, I think you may be aware that we recently assisted the city of Yuma with their situation, and they were about a hundred and forty million unfunded, okay? This is about two point six billion in the blue. And Claude, can you move that cursor around a little bit? Uh, there you go, thank you very much. There's the state of Arizona, and our counties in the brown are about one point three billion. Uh, we have some in the tribal community, and we have some in the fire districts. So I wanted to just make you feel a little better, uh, you're not alone, and this was again as a result of the PBI that I mentioned to you and the investment situation that went on back then. Okay, next page. Claude, take them right to the, uh, to the bottom right-hand corner, and we're estimating your current unfunded liability, if we end up doing a refinance, at about eight point, eight point two million. Next page. I want to take you to the center here, and unlike ASRS, which is a pooled program, the police and fire have their own separate assets and their own separate liability. So they're not, they're not pooled, if you will, like ASRS is for our other employees. So in the middle here, this is, uh, recent information from PSPRS. If you look at the police, the police liabilities, the AAL is your actuarial liabilities for the police at about twelve point five million, that's what's owed to the retirees on a present value basis, okay? The city has with PSPRS about seven point eight million dollars in the account. And that account is working, that account is invested. So the UAL is the unfunded, sorry for all the technical terms here, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So your unfunded liability for police is about four point eight million, meaning your assets, uh, your liabilities exceed your assets in that fund by about four point eight million. The city is paying to PSPRS seven point three percent per year on that unfunded liability, which is a pretty high rate, as you know. So the unfunded amount at about four point eight million is being repaid to PSPRS at a rate of seven point two percent. Your funding ratio, as Ms. Castro just mentioned to you, is about sixty-two percent. Obviously, the policy goal of our cities ultimately is to get to a hundred percent, so your assets on a present value basis will equal your liabilities. Right now, about sixty-one point nine percent, not bad. We've seen a lot of them in the thirties. Um, and so we, we compliment the city for doing all in all a pretty good job with that unfunded ratio as best you can. And then on the fire side of the equation, it's, it's better, as you can see, about seventy-eight percent funded. And you can see that our liabilities, present value liabilities for our fire tier one, tier two employees, about nine point two million, and we have about seven point two million dollars invested at PSPRS that's going to work every day. So that shows you essentially kind of what your current unfunded liability is. Let's call it about eight, eight, eight million plus, uh, at which you're paying seven point three percent to PSPRS. Okay, the statewide average on the right there is about forty-four percent, just to give you a perspective. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, I'm gonna pause there for a moment. I wanted to, uh, start with kind of a history of the tier one, tier two that resulted in the unfunded liability. I wanted to remind you of what your current situation is, what your unfunded amount is, and what your ratios are. So before I move forward, Mr. Mayor, can I answer, Claude or I, answer any questions of the council?
Mark, yeah, this is Mayor Sainz, and, and no, I thank you, no, it was pretty clear, it's pretty clear, and
Okay.
and here's that, uh, obviously, uh, the different cities around the state are having the same problem. And unfortunately, our, the decisions made by our congressional representatives from a state really did us a, uh, a disfavor, but at the same time, we need to protect our, our retirees also. And so they've worked their, their years, and, uh, it's only fair they get their fair share. And, uh, it's really unfortunate that it had to go, actually, we had it go this way. So no, thank you, Mark Reader, thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you very much, Mayor, thank you, council. Claude, thank you, uh, page, slide four, please. Okay, so, uh, we've got a fancy chart here for you, but if you go to the right-hand side, where the red bar is, where the red box is, this is police, and then I'm gonna talk fire next. Where it says total UAL amortization in the fourth, fifth column over, and Claude's doing that. You have entered into an agreement to repay the unfunded police liability that we just discussed with you. You have entered into an agreement to repay that back based on this amortization schedule. So this is really no different than a mortgage refinancing. So the city, by way of example, for this budget year, budgeted approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollar payment to PSPRS. And as you, uh, prepare for your twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which you're gonna be starting on shortly with staff, you can see that the estimate from PSPRS is it'll be three thirty-five for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then you can see all the way out to two thousand and thirty-eight, that accelerates to almost one point three million. Okay? Um, so we charted that on the left-hand side to help put this into perspective for you. You can see that if you don't refinance this obligation, and you want to address it on a pay-as-you-go basis, and we're gonna talk about a couple of options on that, you can see that your payments to PSPRS are expected to increase by four times over what it is now. About three hundred and twenty thousand a year now, unfortunately, going to almost a million three. So it's a pretty big hill to climb, and, and, uh, we wanted to just kind of walk you through this math. Now, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't want to bog you down in too much detail, but if you look in the total payroll column there, Claude, if you can do that, some of the good news is that you can see that on a total payroll basis, that'll start going down because some of your tier one and tier two employees will start coming off the books, okay? Now remember, all your new employees, unless you hire an employee that's grandfathered into tier one, tier two, right? So going forward, all new employees are tier three, and, uh, over time, the tier one and tier two payroll expense will start to go down a little bit. So I wanted to make you feel a little bit better about that. But the, the, the bad news here for you is that your payments are gonna, not quadruple, but they're gonna be four times higher than what they are right now according to PSPRS. Okay, next page. Uh, we're gonna focus on fire here. Fire has its own assets and its own liabilities, as we discussed, as you know, it's not as bad. Your payments, uh, this, this year were a hundred and fifteen thousand out of your budget, going to expected one fifty-five next year based on the most recent data. And as you can see, that's gonna go to almost eight hundred thousand a year. And as indicated in the chart on the left-hand side, that's gonna go up about six point seven times if we don't come up with a solution to try to address this. Okay, next page. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, all we did here is we just simply combined police and fire for you. Claude and I wanted to separate them so that you could see the, the, the numbers for each fund. But this one shows that when we combine them, we go from four thirty-five to a million, I'll round if you don't mind, to about a million nine, or about four point three percent higher than where we are roughly today, okay? So that's the, uh, that's the news in terms of the liability that's on your balance sheet, uh, that is required to be paid. And we wanted to share additional information other than what, uh, what, uh, staff has, has shared with you. Next page, please. Okay, so with that backdrop, uh, going forward, uh, the council has some options to address that unfunded growing liability. And we know, we know that it's, uh, something that keeps you up at night, I'm sure. And we know that you don't like seeing that significant increase over the years. So here are your really three options. The city council, the policymakers, uh, can do nothing. And if you do nothing, you will continue to pay the accelerating payments that we mentioned to you. At some point in time, it's gonna, it's gonna become more significant pressure on the budget, obviously, which is already, you know, your budget has lots of demands, as you know, but it's gonna create some additional budget pressure. And I don't know, maybe at some point in time, there's a need to cut expenses, uh, raise revenues or a combination thereof, as you address each year the unfunded tier one, tier two liability. Number two, as you know, when you go through the budget process, the legislature passed a law that requires you each year to develop a policy as to how you're going to address it. And you did it last year, and you will do it this coming year. And as you study your unfunded liability, you'll need to update that. And as part of that update, um, you can increase revenues, cut expenses, or just kind of continue, uh, as indicated, and hope that PSPRS will, will return, you know, higher returns to try to cut that back. The third option that we wanted to share with you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is the opportunity, uh, to share with you that other cities have been addressing, and that is in a historically low interest rate environment, which as you know, we're in. Mortgage rates are in the two percent. Uh, the municipal bond market is at or near all-time lows. And maybe that's the really only positive thing of COVID, is that it has resulted in this historical low interest rate environment. Maybe on top of that, the only other positive thing I can see is that we'll get some federal cares money. Hopefully, there's some more of that coming. But as a result of the low interest rate environment, could the city issue bonds like we have with you in the past? As a A-plus rated city, double A minus, A-plus rated city, could we issue bonds and take the money? And we're hoping that we could get you in the low 3% money, high 2%, low 3% money. And if so, could we refinance out the 7.3% accrued rate to PSPRS and save the city some money, and at the same time, address the growing accelerating amortization? So those are the three options, and what I'd like to do is take you to the next page and kind of put some of this into perspective for you. This is a chart that shows you the interest rate environment on the right-hand side in the taxable US Treasury market. So we just wanted to give you a quick reminder. We like, we like that. They have edged up recently. Nothing too significant. We're hoping they stay low. We think the Fed, Federal Reserve wants to keep them low. We think that interest rates could percolate up a little bit, depending upon the amount of the stimulus package that comes out, which is being discussed in Congress right now, which could potentially be a little arbitrary. So we'll keep a close eye on that. But right now, Claude and I think that if we did move forward, we're probably high twos to low, low 3% range for the city of San Luis, give or take. Next page. Okay. The red line, the red line is your current PSPRS payments. That's, that's what gives us all heartburn. That's, that's our concern. That if we don't do something with the PSPRS payments, that's what the city's facing. And none of us really, really want to see that. So we could issue somewhere around 9.6 million dollars in bonds. And we would take 8.2 million of that, and we would wire that to PSPRS, at which time you would be 100% funded. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council? We also want to introduce to you maybe a, a way to continue to manage the liability. In all of our cities that have done these pension bonds have done this in which they will establish a contingency reserve fund. Okay, and we're estimating that to be about 1.1 million now. That would be the city's money. It is not tied to the bond issue. It is the city's money. It is set aside such that in the future, again, after you become 100% funded, if there was a surprise from PSPRS, in other words, they didn't meet their targeted investment return, or the actual calculations, the actuarial calculations of our retirees changed, which resulted in additional liability to the city that the city could access the reserve fund rather than dipping into the general fund and use that to continue to be at 100% or near funding. So we want to, we didn't want to complicate the discussion, but we wanted to share with you that it's a very common tool. Our cities like it because going forward, we're going to have to continue to manage the unfunded liability because it's going to be invested, and there's going to be actuarial adjustments going forward. So I'm going to take you to the next page. Thank you, Claude. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, sorry for all the numbers, but I like this page. This is what was charted on the previous page. Column one is our fiscal year. Column two are the, are the PS, are the numbers we've already talked about in terms of the payments that are due to PSPRS if we do not do this refinancing. And you recognize the numbers there where we're going up to almost, almost $2 million in 2037 from about a half a million now on a combined basis. Okay? The nice thing about these pension refinancing bonds is we would then re-amortize the debt in column three, where it says be there. And we would restructure your debt. We do not exceed what your payments would be on PSPRS in the fourth column. And you can see in the third column that we would level it out to about $770,000 per year. You see where Claude's doing right there? And we start to chop that mountain down, which is the key public policy challenge for your city. So if we issue new bonds, we could chop that mountain down in column two. We can replace it with a much more stable debt service payment that would give you some more budget predictability versus the second column where it's accelerating at a pretty rapid pace. Okay? The fourth column is your savings. So again, you can see, over the next four, five, six years, we have a little bit of savings. But our savings really starts to occur when we start chopping down the accelerated payments there in column two. So as Claude is showing you there, he's showing you where your savings comes in. And that adds up to about, in the next column there, about 6.7 million dollars in a cash flow. And on a present value basis, save the city about $5 million in, in expected savings under this scenario. So this is the structure that most of our cities have found appealing to them. This is very similar to what we just did for the city of Yuma. And this is very similar to what we just did for Yuma County because both those jurisdictions wanted to go ahead and refinance and reconfigure, for lack of a better term, the debt payments to help the city achieve their budget objectives. Okay, so let me, let me pause there. Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, just wanted to share the background with you, and then we kind of got into a technical conversation of if the city was interested in refinancing, what it might look like, what the savings would be to the city, the expected savings, and how we can potentially chop that mountain down going out to 2038. So with that, I'll take a pause and see if either Claude or I can answer any questions.
You're muted, Mayor.
Claude, actually, Mark. Thank you, and thank you for, obviously, it's obvious that the bond, the refinance is probably the best option for the city at this point in time. Especially when you, when you talk about leveling the, comparing, comparing the two payments from 1.0, from 1 million to 770,000. And that's a lot more appealing. My question to you is, has the city actually gone and done the practice of this issue? Or is this protected by, by, by the constitution, by the general constitution?
Oh, okay. So, good question, Mayor. Column, column two, our current unfunded liability is constitutionally protected, right? Okay. If we issue bonds, so you're constitutionally protected up to the 100%, so you got to pay our retirees, right? And if we did a bond issue, at the time we closed, we will be close to being or at 100%. So let's say five years from now, there's some, some problems, some investment or actuarial problems, and your liability went up again, you would again be required constitutionally to continue to pay the tier one, tier two liability. Okay? If we issue bonds, these bonds would be very similar, Mayor, and members of the council, to the bonds that we have worked with you in the past on. And we would issue the revenue bonds of the city. And we would pledge the revenues that we have in the past. And would then be contractually obligated by the city to be repaid. So I hope I answered your question on those two topics.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Mark. Any questions from council at this point in time? Or are we going to?
Oh, my, Mayor, just a quick comment. I mean, I honestly don't see option one and two as an option because I don't think we could, in a few, five years from now, we won't be able to maintain those payment amounts. Especially since we, I don't see where else we're going to grow our income, since we don't have the property tax initiative that passed. So I think option number three is probably our only and the best option to be able to make sure that we get this covered 100% by 2038, and our retirees, our police and fire people are covered. So I think option three makes sense to me. One, like I said, we can't do one. We can't just not do anything. And number two, option number two, I don't see how we would be able to maintain a $1.2 million payment in a few years from now with our current budget. So we got to prepare for the future and the downturn of the market, and I think option three will protect us.
Very well said, please, Mayor. Mariva Kana, Jr., questions, comments, concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Avri Kalanik, Alaska, comments, questions, concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, Councilmember Torres, any comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you. Lee, any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Mark and Claude for such an amazing presentation, very clear, and demonstrates that option three is the way to go in order to get the people covered, like Mathias said, and yourself, so thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Mark, proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're almost done. Bear with us. We do have a few more slides. Next page, Claude.
Mark, before you continue, we did skip Councilmember Bonses. I'm not sure he has any comments.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Councilmember Bonses, sorry about that, Lee. Thank you.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, proceed.
Okay, very good. Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so what, what potential risks are there? Whenever we issue bonds, as you all know, we've worked together, we have to always talk about risk. And this has got a lot of information on it, and maybe later at home, please read this. But the, the, the biggest risk of doing a pension bond for any city or our government is if we issue bonds, and let's just use 3% at a 3% interest rate, and we take 14 or 15 million dollars, and we wire that to the pension fund, PSPRS. Okay? They have to put that money to work, right? PSPRS is about a $12 billion fund. It's a very diversified fund. But we have to feel comfortable, the city has to feel comfortable, that they're going to manage your money in a manner that, that receives a return at least what your borrowing rate is. Okay? So if we gave them 14 or 15 million dollars, and they got a 2% return in, in their fund, then we should not do this bond issue. Okay? So that's called market risk. Now, if you look at the historical returns of PSPRS, and we'll continue to work with staff, and oftentimes, we'll actually have PSPRS in our study sessions, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. They have been very transparent. They have new leadership, I think, as you're all aware. And they're, and we believe that they're going in a positive direction vis a vis where they've been in the past. I think that's where most of our clients are coming out. If you look at their 10-year return, and I'm going to round here, if you look at the 10-year return of PSPRS, net of their expenses and all that, I think they're in the high sixes, close to 7% return. If you look at the 30-year return, it's somewhere similar. And if you look at the 20-year return, I think they were, net of all expenses, somewhere in the high threes. That's not good. Now, what happened in that period of time was back in the Great Recession. We all lived through the Great Recession, if you remember. 2007, 2008, if you remember. Very difficult time where we went into a Great Recession. And what the fund had done is they invested in some speculative real estate projects and some speculative stocks. And their returns as a result of that were below their expectations. So what we'd like to do is, is have a call with staff and PSPRS, and we're glad to bring them to a council meeting if you feel that would be sufficient. But we have to feel comfortable and confident, if we do this, that our PSPRS pension system is going to, is going to get a return higher than our cost of borrowing. The good news of doing a pension bond in a historical low interest rate environment is you certainly have much more cushion in the current market, getting a low interest rate compared to the rate of return. The other risk associated with pension bond, and you actually have this risk even if you don't do one, and that is the actuarial risk. So the actuarial side of the equation is where the mathematicians have data on all of our retirees, and they're getting more, new information every year in terms of how long people live. One of the good things is people, people are living longer. That's good for all of us. That makes our pension liabilities higher, right? Sometimes we have retirees that decide to retire earlier than expected. So every year, PSPRS hires the mathematicians or the actuaries as it relates specifically to the city of San Luis, and they will update your actuarial liabilities. So that gets back to what we talked about earlier, about the ongoing management of the, of the pension liability based on changing actuarials. So we wanted to share this slide with you and hope that's helpful. Next page. We're not going to dig into this, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the, some pretty good information that Claude put together on the contingency reserve fund. And so as you consider this, this, this opportunity, and we'll spend more time with Mr. De La Hoya and Mrs. Castro and staff on this, consider the, the possibility of funding a reserve fund out of your bond issue, setting it aside, and using that as a budget tool so that in the future, if there are any more surprises on the actuarial or on the investment side, the city will have a tool in its toolbox to continue to manage that, that liability going forward. And it's structured such that you can draw on it, and it's structured such that you can replenish it and continue to manage the liability on an annual basis. Next page. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you've seen this before. This is our revenue bond coverage covenants. I think we can get into this later. Next page. And those are our disclaimers and compliance requirements that we would encourage you to also read. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your patience. Thank you for your questions. We know this is a weighty subject, a very complicated subject. And we hope the information presented this evening was, was helpful to you. And Claude and I stand ready to answer any more questions you might have. I might add. Yeah, I'm sorry, without any, I might add with, 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 with direction, if, if there's interest to proceed, then we can go ahead and work with staff and come back to city council at a subsequent meeting to go ahead and share additional information and/or go ahead and move forward with a possible transaction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Well, the consensus, it appears that unless any, any council member wishes to say or, or differ from his opinion, but I believe we're directing staff to proceed with, with issuing of, of the bonds for refinance of the debt that is owed to the pension fund. So unless any other, unless... So unless any other, unless any, any comments or questions or concerns from any council members, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor real quick to see if there's any comments or concerns regarding proceeding or directing staff to proceed with the issuing of the bonds to refinance the debt. A council member, vice mayor?
No, mayor, just, just if I understood correctly, we want to make sure that they don't invest on GameStop and stuff like that down the road, right? Is that the census? So it doesn't look like their history shows them investing responsibly. So, yeah, I consent, proceed to look at the numbers.
Okay, good. Councilmember Buchanan, any comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor, proceed.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce, any comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, comments, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Avri Carina Carrasco, comments, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, let's move forward.
Good, good, good. Luis, any comments, questions or concerns, councilmember?
No, mayor, this is the way to go, so let's move forward.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone? Nope. Well, the consensus is to proceed with the issuing of bonds. So we're directing staff to proceed. Thank you, Mark, thank you, Claude.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
We're going to go ahead and go. We're going to go ahead and go with item number 2B, discussion of possible direction staff on matters regarding updates on the request for qualifications for the build, the discretionary grant assistance for Sesar Chavez Boulevard project, any problems?
No, mayor. I'm sorry.
No problem. Jenny, are you, are we going to discuss item number 2B?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. What we have before you is briefly, previously I have come to you in a work sessions and provided you updates about the Sesar Chavez Boulevard project. One of those tasks that we were going to do is to, to solicit firms to provide proposals, to provide technical assistance to put the bill grant application together. This is a very competitive grant, the U.S. Department of Transportation. Usually they have a max amount of $25 million. There has been some changes in the regulation where they could potentially require a 20% match. So I want to make sure that you are aware of that. A $25 million, 20% match, you know, we can go up to 5 million, this is a $33 million project. So what we did is we went out for requests for qualifications. We sent out an invitation to 39 firms from a list that Arizona Department of Transportation and the YMPO provided. We held a pre-proposal meeting where we had the evaluation committee composed of Mr. Lojio Vera, Mary French Jones, myself and Jim Davy. We did receive one proposal. And at this point, we're currently negotiating a fee. So far, the initial proposal is at $49,850. This item was, was not put in an allocation for the budget. If you recall during the budget retreat, at this time, well, in March of last year, the Arizona State Land Department had advised us that it was going to take us $5 million to acquire the right of way. So at that time, we felt that there was no way for us to kind of proceed with that. So what the council decided at that time is to kind of remove that allocation. But you did give me direction to come back to you if we felt that we could move forward on this project. Well, now that the Arizona State Land Department has revised its appraisal in its much lower amount, we believe that we should proceed in trying to apply for this funding. The, the notice of funding availability usually is released in February and the turnaround time is in May, so it's a very quick process. They're very complicated applications and that's the reason why we're requesting technical assistance. Even with it, myself and our grant writer, we couldn't put it together this quick. So, so two items, three items to, to really think about is one, is that if we do apply for this funding and it does require a 20% match, we will have to come up with a financial structure to be able to meet them. The other item is, again, this is a very competitive nationwide grant. So we will need Luis Ramírez to help us try to get letters from congressmen, senators, ADOT, you know, try to get to USDOT. So a lot of lobbying has to be done for this project. We really have to fight it, just as we're doing with the Port of entry. With that, I would like your direction if you want us to proceed. I have this item as a word of contract for the next council meeting, but I wanted to give you an update and see if this is still a direction that you wanted to proceed. I'm recommending that we follow through with this application, but it is your decision. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
This is Mr. Sanchez, Jenny, I have no problem to proceed with the application process. I think it's the better way. I think if we have to put the, the matching for the percentage, it's going to be a lot cheaper than, than paying $33 million project to save funds. So, no, I think we should proceed. So I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice mayor, comments, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, I agree, we need to go for this and I think we'll be a good contender for this competitive project nationwide. I have no doubt that soon Luis is going to get it, right, Jenny?
Sure.
You got it?
We're 100% sure.
Yeah, but we got to move forward. I mean, we've been working originally, YMPO, this past week, you know, we moved the project forward also under design and the funding that got allocated. So we got to continue fighting for our city and our Sesar Chavez expansion, so agreed.
Thank you, vice mayor. Councilmember Ponce, comments, questions or concerns?
Ah, no, sir, thank you.
Councilman Buchanan, comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Torres, any comments, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, just move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny, for your presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Avri Carina Carrasco, comments, questions or concerns?
Just to comment that we should definitely move forward.
Thank you, Jenny. No, thank you. Comments, questions or concerns, please?
No, thank you, Jenny, I think this is something that we definitely need, so thank you for bringing it up again to us.
Thank you. So Jenny, the consensus is to proceed.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Just to let you know, it will come out of your contingency. But I know, I'm sorry. But hopefully it will be a good investment.
She gives us a negative.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and go with item number 2C, discussion of possible direction staff on all matters regarding the purchase of a new cell-contained breathing apparatus, fill station, Angel, sorry, you?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council. This was an item that we brought up during the budget retreat. I had told you that the current SCBA fill station that we have was purchased in 2000, around 2002. What, and I'll give you a background of what it is. The fill station that we use is, if you see our SCBA's is what provide us with the breathing apparatus. After we use them, we fill up all our SCBA bottles. The one that we have currently was bought because we used to have a much lower PSI SCBA bottles. About five or six years ago, we went to a different kind of SCBA bottle, which is a bigger, lasts about 45 minutes. So it's not meeting the capabilities that we currently need. Some of the SCBA bottles that we, that we are using and when we fill them up, they might be going up to about 80% capacity, 85% capacity. And that's not safe for our personnel. Like I said, it's been, the last couple of years, we've been doing a lot of repairs on, on our current fill station because of the overloading of our systems. Ellen Curtis is the provider that we purchased it back in 2002 and they're the ones that continue the maintenance. So I'm asking you if we can proceed with the purchase of a new fill station for our fire, for our fire station. And we would also like for you to waive the procurement code and have Ellen Curtis provide the service and the, the fill, fill station. If you guys have any questions, I'll go ahead and answer them.
I think we discussed this in our retreat and I think this was discussed and agreed upon. It is something that is required to provide the services we need for our customers, which is basically our residents. And we also need to make sure that the safety of our, our EMTs and paramedics is well maintained. So I'm, I have no problem with proceeding with, with the purchase. Thank you, chief, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice mayor, comments, questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, any comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Buchanan, any comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ponce, any, any comments, questions or concerns?
Ah, no, sir. This is what we need, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avri Carina Carrasco, comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Luis, any comments, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, thank you, chief. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, thank you, Luis Ramírez, I'm sorry, Angel Ramírez, for, for the presentation and proceed, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go with item number, let's see here, 2D. Discussion of possible direction staff on all matters regarding off-site signs on Archibald Street. Jose Guzmán, director of planning and zoning.
Gruin, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers. So basically, the, the current city code doesn't allow the installation of off-site signs on Main Street, all south of County 22nd. And only allows onsite, off-site signs on commercial properties that are located on, on Arterio Road. And when this ordinance was adopted, was back in 2012, when the traffic going south to Mexico was on, on Main Street. Since then, the traffic had changed to Archibald. And we, when we updated the general plan, the Archibald Street was now, is now considered a, a arterial road. And therefore, by default, the, the regulations allow for off-site signs. So this item is, is to ask council direction of whether the city council wishes to allow off-site signs on Archibald or, or make a change to the ordinance to, to not allow it. Basically, off-site signs are whenever a, a business put a signs advertising a, another business on another location. An onsite sign is basically the same business putting a sign advertising itself.
So Mr. Guzmán, may I ask a question, mayor?
Ah, proceed.
So that means like, obviously, we all know my office is there. At my office, I would be able to, I would be able to install a, a marketing sign as a, on the right of way versus just having the sign on the building where I got restricted to when I opened, correct?
The, it wouldn't be allowed to, to be installed on the right of way. It will be basically allowing you to install a sign and basically advertising Walmart or other business.
Okay, so like on my property, install a sign as, as a marquee or, or like one of the billboards that you see like over there on Main Street.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, cool.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Councilmember Buchanan, comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Good. Councilmember Torres, any comments, questions or concerns?
None, mayor.
Councilman Ponce, comments, questions or concerns?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilman Luna Carrasco, comments, questions or concern?
None, thank you.
Luis, any comments, questions or concerns?
Yes, I'm a little, I'm a little lost, Jose. So we would allow for marquees to go up on Archibald or? I don't know, I got confused.
Yeah, so, so right now, if a business, like Vice Mayor Rosales mentioned, like right now, he has his office on Archibald. Right now, like on, onsite sign, basically he installs a sign advertising his business. And an off-site sign will allow him to maybe rent space for, for another business to be rented out, maybe install a LED screen and just rent two different businesses to be advertised on that location.
A good example would be the Comité Gas Station on Main Street. It didn't have LED marquee, then it had sign de ellos, pero también LED where you could advertise anything else like mobile jewelry services or something like that.
So basically, you're asking us for, to allow those to go on Archibald now as well?
Yeah, so when, when we did the mayor, the general plan amendment, the designation of the street changed, changed to arterial and the city code allows those, those type of signs on arterial roads. So I'm looking for direction from council to either leave the, the city code as it is and allow for those signs to be installed in Archibald or to change the, the code to, to not allow them. Since the previous city code didn't allow those signs on Main Street, all the way from County 22nd to the border. So, but I think the idea was to not put those on Main Street, but since the traffic changed to Archibald, it could be placed there.
Okay, well, as long as they follow right away, I don't, I don't see why there's a problem with it. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
So the consensus, Jose, is to proceed?
Okay, man.
Okay? Thank you, Jose. We're going to go with item number 2E, discussion of possible directions staff on matters regarding the approval and adoption of border number 2021-3 in order of the mayor, city council, city of San Luis Obispo. To authorize the city of San Luis Police Department to receive funding for overtime and mileage by approving an intergovernmental agreement and authorizing execution. I'll start receipt agreement, operation Stone Garden Grant Program Award. Overtime and mileage between the state of Arizona through the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and the city of San Luis Obispo, the San Luis Police Department chief, just, please.
Mayor, vice mayor and the council, thank you. We come to you again this year with good news about Stone Garden as well. And as all of you know and are familiar with it, Stone Garden is the overtime funds that we receive from the Border Patrol. And we were awarded a half a million dollars again this year as we were last year, which is the highest amount that the police department has ever gotten. This year, there were several different changes, one to the administrative staff in the Phoenix area that controls it and what is going to be happening in the near future with the new administration in Washington. So we're very appreciative that this was given to us again. There are some things that may change next year. I hope that the funding, this particular issue is not going to be one of those. If it does, it will greatly impact those who will be able to offset some of their incomes based on our salary structure right now. So for the next year, happy to announce that we've got another 100, $520,000 plus from Border Patrol to carry out their mission. Want to make one last caveat to this. As you know, yesterday, we spent the vast majority of the morning assisting Border Patrol with 20 to 30 that had run across the border. Two days ago, on my way in, out towards Avenue F, we assisted them again with other people that are now beginning to cross over the border illegally. So we're proud that we were awarded this again and we'll look for you to approve this as well.
Thank you, chief. This is always important to make sure that we are participating all. This is always important to make sure that we are participating, or we are assisting our our fellow brothers, government agencies that facilitate and actually protect our homeland and also actually help us also. So I have no problem to proceed with Stone Garden allocation of of money to the city of San Luis. That's that's half a million dollars, and that's the biggest lump sum the city of San Luis had ever gotten. So we're doing something right. So continue work with our our fellow agencies, and and I have no problem recommending we do so. So we're going to go ahead and I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Councilmember, Vice Mayor, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Buchanan, any questions, comments, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, comments, questions, or concerns? Councilmember Torres?
No, I'm sorry. None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponte, comments, questions, or concerns?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Uh, Chief, the consensus for you to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're going to go ahead and go item number two F. Discussion of possible directions staff and all matters regarding proposed resolution two zero seven passed by the voters on November the third, twenty twenty, and amending the city's recreation and marijuana ordinance under number order number four oh three and four oh four to eliminate the needs for dual license for medical and recreational marijuana while maintaining in places that either type of business may be located or adjusting the licensing fee. But we did have an executive session on this plan, so I have no problem, I have no problems or issues with the thing. So I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for any discussion or any concerns from council members. Councilmember Vice Mayor, any comments, questions, or concerns?
No, sir. No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thanks.
Councilmember Torres, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Ponte, comments, questions, or concerns?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Luna Carrasco, Africa, any comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or concerns, Louis? Cabrera, council member?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So go ahead, Glenn, the order was consensus was to proceed with the changes.
Thank you. Number two C?
Thank you so much. Item number two G, discussion of possible directions staff and all matters regarding resolution number two one five three, a resolution of the mayor and city council of city of San Luis, Arizona, authorizing and directing to entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Yuma Union High School District number seven zero for joint athletic and recreational facilities used through the city of, through the city's Parks and Recreation Department and San Luis High School, Kate Morrow, Mr. Cabrera, and Mr. Gabi.
I guess this item, you actually did a motion to pass the the agreement based on the summary that was given at the regular meeting last week. However, when we got out of the meeting, we realized that I had not attached the new agreement. So this is just going to go back on to next week's agenda, and so I'm asking if it can be on the consent agenda rather than open.
Okay, I have no problem with the consent agenda. We've discussed this item, and it's item that actually we discussed this twice already. We had a workshop, and also, as was mentioned in our previous meeting. So I have no, no, no concerns or comments on this item. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, any comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Ponte, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna, Africa Luna Carrasco, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Luis Cabrera, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Kate, proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Gabi, proceed. We're going to go ahead and go and go into item number two H, discussion of possible staff and all matters regarding the proposed resolution of the mayor and the city council of city of San Luis, Arizona, approving and adopting the inmate work intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Corrections. Kate? Mr. Gabi?
Yes, this is inmate workforce with the Department of Corrections. Our previous contract has already expired, but we did want to get this in place for when eventually things get back to normal, and there aren't concerns for COVID and the workforce. I attempted to work with the Department of Corrections on asking them to provide PPE for their workforce, since I believe we're still having supply issues with the N ninety-fives. And I wasn't making headway with getting to the right person. So I'm, we're just probably just not going to be able to get that add-on to the contract. So it'll just be the contract that we've had every year. And Mr. Veda came up, as he uses a workforce, and so did, and Mr. Galvez is also here, the Parks and Rec also uses a workforce when we're able to do so.
Okay, thank you for bringing this topic up. I didn't, I guess it did become up. It's really important that this about the N ninety-five mask, the PPE gets gets addressed. It's very important. I believe they they have resources, and they can provide, it's easier for them to provide the N ninety-five that are that are being given by our, basically the state. But I do agree, they it is a potential workforce, and the city pays a lot of money with with using this workforce. And I believe it gives also a time for the the inmate, actually time to be outside. And so I have a problem with proceeding with the contract. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, sir. We need a partnership that we need for our community and our departments.
Good, good. Thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Okay, good. Councilmember Ponte, comments, questions, or concerns?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Cabrera, any comments, questions, or concerns?
No, I think we we need their their support in our city. I know since they haven't been out, our roads have have been seen a little more more cluttered than before, so they definitely make an impact in our community. So, thank you.
Yes, they do, Louis. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and proceed, okay?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cabrera and Galvez, thank you. We're going to go ahead and go with item number two. I, discussion of possible directions staff and all matters regarding business grant programs to assist small local businesses impacted by the pandemic. Councilmember Luis Cabrera, Jenny Torres, and Monica Carrasco.
Mayor, Mayor, good evening. Mayor members of the council, is Mr. Cabrera going to start the meeting, or should I make my presentation?
Whoever brought this topic up, if you have the information, it's for information only.
Yeah, so Mayor, good evening. This was this was the month that I was able to put three items in the agenda for the work session. So I spoke with Jenny regarding small business grants, following a bill that Rep. Raúl Grijalva introduced to help border cities with small businesses in border cities. So I spoke to Jenny, see if we could do something in case the the bill doesn't get passed, or even if the bill gets passed, if the city could could support small businesses. So I'll leave it up to Jenny to do the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. I'm going to just briefly go through a quick presentation just to show you what the bill is about, is being presented by Congressman Congressman Raúl Grijalva. He's trying to push it under the Border Business COVID nineteen Rescue Act. It's focused on businesses located along the border. The funds would be for the operations of the of the businesses, minimum amount of ten thousand to five hundred. This would be a forgivable loan, so it becomes pretty much a grant. It would be administered by the Small Business Administration. It is not clear when, if this bill is adopted. It could take weeks, months. We're not very clear on that. But they have reached out to me to try to see if we can talk to about some of the businesses that might have been impacted by COVID. Yuma County in back in September thirtieth, they did start a small business rent and mortgage relief grants. They kind of piggyback on what the state program started a few months back. They allocated two hundred thousand dollars. They focus on specific businesses, gyms, fitness centers, studios, bars, water parks, and movie, which is what was included in the executive order by Governor Ducey. They have to have fewer than fifty employees. They pay for two months' rent or mortgage. The maximum amount was twenty-five thousand. They did hire a local, local, local First Arizona to process all the applications and evaluate the needs. They did charge a five percent administrative fee, and to my understanding, the funds have been used. Now, the city of Yuma started a similar program back in July. It was called the Small Business Grant Relief Program. They originally started with three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then eventually added another two hundred and thirty, so five hundred and fifty thousand. They broke it down into different types of businesses and and what the maximum amount was, as you can see in the slide. They did have also different requirements. The grant was used for payroll and operating costs. The minimum was fifteen hundred to ten thousand. They they used another organization, Arizona Community Foundation, with a one point nine administrative fee, again, to process all applications. The funds, my understanding, the funds have been, there's no additional funding at this time. Melissa, next. City of Summerton also started the business in July of last year, the Small Business Relief Micro Grant. They allocated about a hundred thousand dollars focused on the small businesses, fewer than twenty-five employees. Again, they kind of put it under operational cost, making it more flexible to what the needs were for the businesses. Minimum was fifteen hundred to seven thousand. They also used Local First at a five percent administrative fee, and the funds have been expended. And so those are some of the programs that have been done by other communities. At this time, it would, we could definitely start a program. We could partner with one of the agencies that the other communities have used, but now we would have to try to put in some funding, and I think that's where finance and council would need to give me direction as to how much funding could we allocate and where would that money come from.
Jenny, could this, are we talking about the contingency fund? Our contingency fund? Because this is, this is not a budgeted item.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand the question.
So are we talking about the contingency fund?
Uh, I will have Monica tell us where we could allocate money to start this program.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Yes, we did not budget to fund this program. We can so be interested in initiate this program and find some funding. I was looking at the projects that we have included in budget, and in talking to El Ojo this morning, he mentioned that even though that they already started the new fleet shop, they don't believe that they want to spend all the funds allocated to that project. They're going to spend about half. What? Oh, so they're going to spend about half, so we will have about a hundred thousand dollars available there if council will want to do something to support the businesses in the San Luis area.
This is Kate. The, the way these were funded in our area were through, it was considered a pass-through either through the state or through federal government. So there are legal concerns about possibly anti-gift clause issues. So if this is the direction we're going, we'll all need to research that aspect of it.
Okay, so you're saying that there's a possible risk, possible risk of of that clause being interfering with the possibility of us providing assistance to our business community?
And because, I'll have to see if we have federal funding that we can say it's a pass-through or or whether there might be a legitimate economic development type business support directly through what authority we have as a city.
Okay, so Jenny, going back to, are we promoting Grijalva's possible funding? Or if Grijalva's plan or does not work, are we talking about them providing that service? Or are we talking about us just providing that service, taking into account that Grijalva is also doing that?
Well, I think we have not promoted it because it's still in the bill, and we don't know if it's going to get, excuse me, we don't know if it's going to get adopted, so we have not promoted it yet. They have asked us to try to provide some examples of some of the businesses that have been affected. Again, I don't know if this bill will pass or not. I think the option is we wait and we see, you know, if this bill passes, and we work through them to be able to get the funding directly. If at one point it does not pass, then I think it's the council's decision if you want to start your own program like the other municipalities did. But that's a council decision.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because I know I got a personal call by Grijalva himself regarding the issue, and so that's what he wanted to do, and actually spoke to Ruben Reyes also. So with good, good, the odds of it passing are are high, especially especially because it is just, it's focusing on our border community, and it's a, it's a small line in a big bill. So, no, I have no problem, and and this is an excellent idea. If we can generate a hundred thousand, if Mr. Veda can find those a hundred thousand, I think, unfortunately, the the expenditures on the, going back to Vice Mayor's opinion on 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 funding the the structure, just to let you know, Mr. Vice Mayor, okay? This did not come from me, Vice Mayor, okay? I just want to clarify that.
What's another year?
So, no, this is an excellent idea.
Yeah, I talked to El Ojo in regards to the structure. We're still on track, and if this helps the community, and if it's possible, great. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's, there's checks in place to make sure it doesn't get abused. I've heard of a lot of abuses on on Yuma and stuff like that for businesses that don't need assistance. So let's just make sure we do, it needs to be done properly.
Very good, very good comment. So, okay, very good. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. Councilmember Torres, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ponce, comments, questions?
Well, I'm just keep an eye on the money. I mean, finances, make sure, I mean, we can do it, you know? Thank you.
Very good, very good. Councilmember Buchanan, comments, questions?
Yeah, hopefully, we're gonna help those out there, you know, those businesses, small businesses. Yeah, I mean, if we can support it, you know, we're not...
Very good. Councilmember Apica Luna Carrasco?
No questions.
Thank you. Luis, excellent idea, and I think we should proceed. And I sure hope that Grijalva can get the bill passed. But any comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, Mayor. So Jenny, talking about, or referring back to the comments from Vice Mayor Rosales about the money being misused, do you know what type of guidelines were used by the City of Yuma and the City of Somerton to provide these funds to the businesses?
Yeah, what they did is, in my presentation, it had some of the requirements. So they, you know, they had to meet those requirements. It was a grant fund, so I would have to check with them. I think that the only report back to them was, you know, how many businesses were assisted, what businesses and how much were assisted and for what type. I think that was the information that was provided to me. The regulations, the requirements, we set them. We can set them just like the other communities did. I had not heard that, Vice Mayor, that there was abuse. Obviously, you know, with this type of programs, it could happen. I would believe that, you know, working with the businesses and, you know, if we want to be able to request additional documents to verify that, you know, either if it's a mortgage payment that they are late, you know, maybe, you know, those are the type of requirements that we set to make sure that, you know, they are using the money for what they're, you know, what they stated. My comment is, I really like the mortgage and the rent because if you provide that to them, then you're making sure that they're staying in place for the next two months, and the savings that they have can be put into others' operations. But Somerton did tell me that they really like giving them the flexibility to, you know, to focus on which areas was most needed. Some of them needed PPE, some of them needed to pay off other loans, some of them needed to, you know, salaries. So it would be up to us to set the regulations, and we could set specific requirements to make sure that they do not take advantage of this.
Thank you. Another of my questions, Jenny, have businesses reached out for support throughout this pandemic?
They have not reached out to me, but I did see a video that SBA put together, and there was a business here in the community that specifically stated that they had not received any support from the local government. I started talking to some of the businesses, and, you know, they do need some assistance. Their sales are down. So we would really have to go back and reach out to more businesses to make sure that there's definitely a need. And we can decide on the criteria, you know, who really needs it and who doesn't.
And well, my last question would be, if we were to move forward with this and not wait for our Grijalva's bill to go through, how fast could we get money into, like, the support for the businesses? How soon can the businesses see these grants?
Well, I think we can come up with the regulations pretty quick because a lot of the work has been done by other communities. As long as Elogio releases that money, I think we can move pretty fast. I would have to just set up a contract with, for example, Local First or any of the other organizations and bring it back to council for approval. So probably between, you know, if I can get it on the agenda, probably two, three, four weeks at the most.
Okay, so I guess it's just a matter of direction from the council. Thank you, Jenny.
You're welcome, thank you.
Jenny, so I could write it down because I heard it, but I didn't write it down. What's the amount that Elogio transferred over?
100,000.
Hey, Elogio, we'll have a discussion about those 100,000. All right, thanks.
Yeah, going back to Vice Mayor, it has been a challenge to get that building funded. But if council feels that we can actually move on or actually be able to extend the expenditures of the need of the new center for, I mean, for what we're building. But I think, Luis, you are right. I think the city should provide some assistance, and I have no problem with recommending we go ahead and proceed and use 100,000 that Mr. Veda has and create the funding or the loans, being able to allocate that money and being able to actually to, in two or three weeks, provide that service to our community. We need to make sure, first and foremost, Kay, that we're not breaking any gift clause that might occur. And this is a great idea, and it is a loan. I know a lot of people have been asking for those forgivable loans that the federal government's giving. But my big question is, we need to make sure that these loans get paid off and the city is able to actually process those loans in an expedited way. And I know we have to contract with a different firm for processing. But they, it is possible. The City of Somerton did it, the City of Yuma did it, so. And I thought it was actually higher numbers that they were lending. But 1,200, 2,000, 3,000, 7,000 sound like something that a business can actually use. And actually, those are loans that actually are paid back to a... They pay back. So it's the community's money, so I think it's a very essential and important. We do that, and Luis, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up, and I have no problem setting up something right now. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor. Vice Mayor, comments, questions?
No, sir. No, sir, I know we've talked about this in the past, and I think the times that we're going through with COVID and everything, it's a perfect time to implement this, you know, before we didn't have the funding and the police staff got together and worked on finding it. So I have staff and everyone for working to make this happen. So, yeah, thank you.
Very good, very good, thank you. Councilmember Buchanan, comments, questions?
No, none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres, comments, questions? Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Ponce, comments, questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Apica Luna Carrasco, comments, questions?
Just to comment, actually, thank Elogio for giving up 100,000 for this project or item. That's very nice of him.
Yeah, yes, he did. I'm looking at the Vice Mayor right now, so, yes. Luis, thank you, great idea, and I think we should promote it and actually do it. If we have those 100,000, I think we should do it. I know the City of Yuma is almost at the 500,000 range. I don't think we can do 500,000, but I think we can actually do those 100,000 that actually will help and alleviate some of that tension, some of that loss of revenue of some of our businesses. So, good deal, thank you, Luis. Comments, questions?
No, just thank you, thank you guys for working together, Elogio, Jenny, and Monica as well. So it's great that we come together for the community. Like the mayor said, they bring in the income to us, and it's only fair that we support them through these harsh times.
And I agree with you. Thank you, Luis, appreciate it. So Jenny, proceed, please proceed with the setting up, please.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We're gonna go ahead and add number 2J, discussion of possible directions staff and all matters regarding citywide beautification program. Councilmember Luis C. Cabrera, Mr. Galaví, Parks Minister Mr. Veda, and Chief.
So good evening, again, Mayor and members of the council. So I spoke to Louis on this one a little bit about possible beautification project, a cleanup campaign. I did tell him area, like, key areas that I had complaints from the constituents, and they were saying that the city started to look a little dirty and cluttered. And I know one of the main reasons is that we don't have those inmates out in the streets and helping us with the cleanup that they usually do. But another of the areas that a lot of people have approached me on is 4th Avenue from... Cesar Chavez Boulevard, from 4th Avenue through 10th Avenue, all those trees or desert plants that grow. If there was a possibility to remove them and just have that area cleaned, so the city starts looking a little bit more presentable, per se. I know Border Fitness, or no, 24/7 is building a gym, and then there's other buildings coming up already. So it would help for them as well that it looks nice and clean. So that's why this was another of the things I wanted to bring up to council.
Thank you, Luis. Anyone else? Mr. Galaví?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So I'll start on this one. So, yeah, so the inmates do help a lot throughout the city. They do help. It's cheap and it's a lot of labor that they help us regarding the... But that doesn't mean, you know, with the current staff that we have, we can add our efforts and try to do better with the maintenance on some of the areas that we know are more problematic, such as Avenue F and East San Luis, as well as even others near downtown. But so we'll work on improving our efforts there regarding Cesar Chavez. Some of the things that we've discussed in-house, we'll add more attention to cleaning and grading our shoulders. I know in the past, we've discussed of improving or adding beautification to some of the islands that are not ours, but we could get permission from, like, such as water users. That's in the works as well. So I can say from public works, and we'll definitely be focusing on some of these areas that were mentioned, and we shouldn't see a difference here in the near future.
Mr. Veda, I wanted to ask you, what was the status of the walking path on Cesar Chavez and 7th Avenue, that area in front of, whether a gym is being built? What's the status on that one?
Mayor, on that one, Alejose Guzmán sort of answered that one. It's been the permitting process that's been slow, but there's some progress, and I'll have him go through that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. So we're working with the Yuma County Water Users Association on doing an agreement to cover all the areas that they own. That way, we will be easier for the city to go in and do any type of construction on Laskip. And the area between 6th and 8th on the north side of Cesar Chavez Boulevard is part of this agreement that we're working on, as also all the canal right-of-way for the future pathways. We actually received comments from the Yuma County Water Users Association last week, and we're working on addressing those comments, and hopefully, we'll come soon with the agreement approval.
I just want to make sure that this item does not get dropped off or it doesn't take another two or three years to set this item. Luis, thank you for bringing this up. The city needs a beautification project. And the thing is, we're not saying that parks is not doing their job. We're not saying that highway users is not doing their job. What we're saying is that we need to see, the community actually is actually the ones that are complaining. And actually, they're seeing, we've done a great job in the past, and we can do better, in my opinion. So I know we're in the pandemic. I know the scheduling staff is different from before. But we definitely need to make sure that our community sees our workers actually out there and actually, the City of San Luis is growing exponentially. And the thing is, we need to stay on top of our brushes and streets and the appearance, the aesthetics of our streets, and it's very important. So once again, this topic was brought up and has been brought up several times in the past, and we want to make sure that all departments are involved in the aesthetics or the appearance of the City of San Luis are aware that the community is watching. They are seeing. And the thing is, everyone is working. Every... And the thing is, yes, we are in a pandemic, but yet we are paying our employees. And so it's very important that these locations, these key locations, especially the ones that Luis mentioned, get addressed and get looked at. It's very important. I know we're all busy, I know we're all overworked. I know we need at least, I would say, another six, seven men, parks are wrecked, and also highway users too, to address the growing demand of the city. But let's do our best, let's try to make our streets look good, make sure that Cesar Chavez is the key artery, and we cannot let it down. So once again, let's proceed and make sure that items discussed in the past don't get put on the agenda three years from now. And Luis, thank you for bringing this up. I'm gonna go ahead and open this discussion for comments, concerns. So Vice Mayor, comments, questions?
Well, just like you commented, Mayor, you know, this is, I think, an item that every councilor has put on the agenda once we get in there and get over three options. We've put it in there in the past 12 years several times. Hopefully, we could find funding for it this time. Elogio? No, we already gave some to Jenny, so nothing from us from that building right now, so. But hopefully, we can, and I know the Cesar Chavez has been an issue with the right-of-way, and I know Elogio has talked with me several times about just putting gravel on there to make some kind of safety walking path, the legality. So I appreciate what staff has done, and hopefully, now with Mr. Councilmember Luis bringing it up again, it'll revive it, and maybe we can see some, something they've done this year with it. I do applaud the staff, you know, in regards to keeping low-cost, high-impact items like the graffiti. We've done very good with that throughout the city. So you see very low graffiti, PD, and public works is on it, getting that done as soon as it gets reported, and parks as well, so. Thank you on that, and yeah, let's see what we can do this time around.
Mayor, if I may, Vice Mayor reminded me of a great point when he said the low cost and high impact. Another of the things, and I don't know if I mentioned this to you, Louis, or not, was on Avenue F, and I think this is more for Elogio. Residents have shared that San Luis Lane, or, yeah, well, I guess it's San Luis Lane, like, the first street, as soon as you enter, the house is. Whenever there are sandstorms, that road usually gets really piled up with sand. And it does take a few days before highway users get out there and clean up, or I don't know who's in charge of that. But they told me, hey, we have this problem. A solution could be adding, like, cement barriers, like the ones they have going out to Mexico and the border, through those entrances. That way, at least the area maintains a little cleaner and all those bushes don't pile up against the walls. I know Elogio's workers were out there a few weeks ago cleaning up many, many bushes out there, so I don't know if that's another possibility, if we could buy, like, cement barriers and put in. I don't know if I made any sense or not, but that's what they recommended me or they asked me to bring up to you guys in council.
Mayor, if I may, so, yeah, so on the San Luis Lane, the blow sand is definitely an issue. I mean, that's one of the things that, in the past, we've tried to have crews out there, you know, just trying to maintain the streets as clean as we have in town or in the west part of town. And then by the time they come around, you know, that blow sands, you know, sort of cover the sidewalk and part of the asphalt as well. So we have, in the past, discussed the options are doing, like, hay bales or concrete, you know, with... So we'll look at that option again, we'll revisit it. Our concern on the hay bale was people would, you know, lit them up at night, and that has been a concern elsewhere. With the concrete barriers, I mean, I think we can get some reflective tape if we want to go through the expense and adding them, just so people don't run into them and, you know, causing a fatality or something like that. But there's also some plastic barriers that could be purchased. So we'll put together... But there's also some plastic barriers that could be purchased. So we'll, we'll put together a, uh, a cost to it and then we'll, we'll decide if we move forward or not. But we'll, we'll definitely, like I said, we'll, we'll be focusing a lot more on trying to keep that area clean. Uh, regarding the, uh, the, the pathways, like, uh, Vice Mayor mentioned, between Fourth and Sixth or Tenth, or actually will be Sixth. Um, the, the right-of-way is really the, the, the holdup here. I mean, we, we, we can go in and do some grading and maybe do some, uh, stabilized pathways. So we, we're getting very close, I think, within, possibly within weeks, you know, that, um, um, well, actually no, probably a month or more, but, but, but we're really close, um, on, on acquiring that right-of-way from the state land department.
Good deal. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Veda, uh, and, and thank you for those comments. And, uh, I know we discussed about possibly putting haystacks, uh, in, in particular areas, especially, uh, over there, uh, Avenue, uh, uh, Avenue F. I know they have the same problem there and that hasn't been addressed. Um, so we, I know Ralph, uh, had mentioned possibly putting some haystacks in those, uh, empty lots in front of those subdivisions, uh, and, and, uh, it's a very viable option also that actually prevents, uh, the sand from, from actually going into the subdivision. So, um, an alternative to concrete would be haystack. So that's another option that, uh, we need to look at also. So, thank you, Mr. Veda. I appreciate it. So, Lee, thank you. Great idea. Uh, and, and, uh, we, uh, like Mr. Rosales mentioned, has, uh, we have brought this issue in the past. So I know staff is, is trying their best, uh, to do what they can. So, so thank you, Lee. Appreciate it. Thank you for, for the comments, staff. And thank you, council members, for, for pushing. So, but we're gonna go ahead and proceed. Okay, Mr. Veda and, and, uh, Lee, uh, Mr. Galavie?
Thank you, thank you.
I am number two K discussing the public works and staff in all matters regarding the speed limit on U Street, Dross U Street. Uh, this is a topic that has been brought up in the past and, uh, I know physics has to do something with this. Um, uh, Chief, or, or, um, started off, Mr. Luis Veda and, uh, Chief, I want to hear this, and Mr. Veda. Okay, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, I know that this topic has been, been brought up on several different occasions as far as the speed limit on U Street is concerned. As well as the speed limit on Tenth Avenue, as well as County Twenty-Second. And my personal feelings on this is whatever council decided to do, that's what we would do. However, I would be remiss if I did not look at what I really believe would be the risks associate, uh, associated with that and the liability that it may put on the city. Right now it is zoned as a residential area and most residential areas, uh, are twenty-five miles an hour. The most that I have seen some is thirty to thirty-five. But U Street is a little bit uniquely different. Number one, from William Brooks all the way to Sixth, uh, it's that two lane. And then you get to the curve and you have a stop sign at Sixth Avenue. You continue to go eastbound from Sixth Avenue, you have another stop sign, uh, that's at Eighth Avenue and you continue to go to Ninth Avenue. You have the park which has a tremendous amount of activity and then you finally get to Tenth Street or Tenth Avenue where you have another stop sign. My feeling is, is I would keep it at twenty-five, simply because most people, uh, go over, uh, the speed limit anyway. So you're looking at most people doing between thirty and thirty-five, um, even though it's twenty-five. Uh, we do citations, obviously, but there is discretion on the officer's parts as to how much they write them for. If we bump that to thirty, then you can probably put an average of thirty-five to forty, uh, it would be the average of cars that are going. If you bumped that to thirty-five, you're looking at forty to forty-five. And I don't know anywhere inside of the city, to my recollection, that has a forty to forty-five mile an hour speed limit. I think it's pretty much twenty-five and thirty-five, other than possibly Maine. And so I think by upping this with the amount of pedestrian traffic that walk on U Street during the evening time, as well as the increased traffic that you do get, uh, when the port of entry, uh, employees leave and or are coming to work. Uh, when you have, uh, eighteen-wheelers and commercial vehicles that utilize U Street, um, as far as their route, uh, from deliveries downtown, uh, to Tenth Avenue and then out. Uh, I think that if you up that speed limit, you're gonna create a liability risk that I don't think that you would be willing to take. I'm always open for discussion when it comes to those things. Um, Illochio might be able to answer more, uh, appropriately for the designs of U Street and what it might be capable of handling with a traffic study. But I think most of my staff, at least a man's staff, would agree to the fact that twenty-five miles an hour, uh, is the appropriate speed limit.
Not only that, but Chief, uh, I don't, I don't, I didn't pay attention, but there's still commercial traffic, big rigs driving down the street. And then we have a lot of people doing exercise in the evenings and mornings on both sides of the, of the sidewalks. And there are not very wide sidewalks to the edge of the road. So that would be another factor that was considered.
I agree, Vice Mayor. And one of the things I, I take that usually going home when I fill up from the station and even at eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night. There's still quite a bit of people that are out there that are exercising on both sides of the street. I know that twenty-twenty is a little bit different with the pandemic and the park hasn't been utilized as to its full capacity. But once we start to get back to what we call considered normal, um, and the programs from Parks and Rec at the city, uh, park there, uh, is going to increase pedestrian traffic quite a bit, uh, as well as vehicular traffic that comes off of uh, Ninth Avenue and a few of the streets that are around there as well. So you put all of those things in a congested area and you up the speed limit, you're asking for a particular problem, I think.
Uh, this is Mayor, uh, Chief, uh, you, you are right. And my biggest concern is, uh, uh, I sometimes go to the pharmacy, uh, during lunchtime and, uh, uh, I see at least three or four rigs, eighteen-wheelers that are, some of them are not loaded, some of them are loaded. And the thing is, uh, uh, if we do increase the speed limit to thirty-five, especially on U Street, for example, uh, the timing will take for them to actually break. Uh, we do have kids also that go through U Street and a lot of people exercise with it. And the thing is, uh, the liability and the risk are, are very high, uh, in regards to if we, uh, do, uh, increase the speed limit, especially in that area, uh, because we are liable, uh, for the trucks not being able to stop at thirty-five or forty miles per hour. Uh, would be nice if it was, it was at thirty-five and, and, and driving on, on U Street during that time, I see that the drivers, uh, everyone's going to lunch and everyone's going, want to go to Main Street. Uh, and the thing is, uh, the average, uh, speed is close to forty-five. Uh, and that's what I noticed. And the thing is, people need to be aware that it is twenty-five and there are people, there are students, uh, that, that actually use the sidewalks and they're, they're not white sidewalks. So, uh, we have looked at, looked at this in the side, at County Twenty-two, a big one. Uh, if, uh, if you want to get speeders, uh, um, County Twenty-two is probably gonna be a big one. Uh, the average, I mean, me driving on that, I, I, that, that I know it's, it's, uh, it's zoned for, for, uh, residential. Uh, but, uh, the average on that one is forty-five. Uh, there's a lot of desperate people that actually use County Twenty-two. So, um, it's gonna be an issue. It always has been an issue. Um, I always wanted to increase the speed limit on County Twenty-two. On U Street, I understand that the big rigs can't stop fast enough. If we increase, uh, the, 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 uh, the miles to, uh, the speed limit to thirty-five. Uh, so it takes them at least, uh, forty yards more or something like that. So that's not a good thing for, for any, any resident to, to have to experience, something like that. We have not had any accidents, but, uh, uh, actually no runovers or, or motor versus, motor vehicle versus pedestrian or semi versus pedestrian, uh, you know, on U Street. Then we want to keep it that way. So, uh, no, it's a topic of discussion and I know, uh, uh, staff and I know, uh, residents have discussed this in the past. Uh, and so actually people, I remember when people wanted speed funds on U Streets and on different streets because of the, uh, reckless driving that can, uh, 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 drivers do occur because they are speeding. Uh, so, um, that's the other topic, uh, people wanted, uh, to actually slow down the process, so. Um, but that's, that's, that's open for discussion. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor. Uh, and something that council can do, we can change speed limits. But we need, we need, we need to take into account the viability associated with the increase in speed limit and the increase of traffic in that area. So, uh, Vice Mayor, comments, questions, concerns?
Not, no additional comments.
Thank you. Councilmember, we can?
No, Mayor, thanks.
Councilmember Torres?
No, Mayor, but, uh, for myself, it's, uh, the ci- the speed limit that they have right now is, is fine because yo estoy como la viejita camino bien despacito.
Hi, Mr.
But it's, but it's, I don't, I don't think for, for the young people, it's right, pero para mí está bien. Yeah. It's the speed limit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, wants to comment, say, if you answer?
Uh, Mayor, I agree with the public chief. I think we, we should keep it at twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you, council member. Um, Africa, I got extra comments, questions, concerns?
Um, just one comment or question for the chief. Um, chief, I'm sure you know when the peak hours for speeders is. Um, so have you ever considered doing like a detail or sort of like an operation kinda to, for the communities to see that you guys are out there and maybe that'll deter or, um, stop people from speeding as much? I know you can't stop it completely, but maybe it'll be something to look into? What do you think?
That's a, that's a great, that's a great question. And obviously one of the things that we did do was purchasing, getting the grant to purchase the two speed trailers, which the very first place that we put one of them was on U Street, I think between Sixth Avenue and Eighth Avenue. Um, a- and again, in a deterrent to slow it down. And one of the things that we've talked about, uh, just recently that's coming back as soon as our motors officers go to Phoenix in March and get trained, we will have two motors officers, uh, that will be working traffic details. Yeah, in, in reference to the, the question really as far as, um, enforcing speed. And I think not just on U Street, but one of the ideas that we came out with was we were going to do a complete unmarked detail. Obviously several of us have, uh, uh, police cars that are equipped, um, with radars that are unmarked. And we were going to do an unmarked detail and then COVID-nineteen hit and traffic seemed to slow down to a, a pretty small, uh, pace compared to normal. One of the obstacles that we were facing with the unmarked units was a house bill that was introduced in Phoenix, which would prohibit any unmarked vehicle from even pulling over a speeder. Uh, when I come to and from work every single day, um, I can stop people without any problem. When they don't, they don't see me as a police car. And so obviously those are tools that we certainly can use. Not just on U Street to get the message across, but it would be one thing that we would do. Let's say that if council did decide to say, okay, we do want to raise the speed limit from twenty-five to thirty on U Street or thirty-five. Yeah, they're gonna go a little bit fast. Can we do a zero tolerance patrol? Yes, we can, depending on the availability. Most of the traffic in reference to the last part of the question really is peak hours in the morning between about six AM to eight AM. That seems to be pretty peak. And right around that five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock, uh, seems to be the peak hours as well. Lunchtime does pick up a little bit with people going to whatever restaurants that they want to go to. Um, you know, off of, off of, uh, Cesar Chavez as far as La Bodega and some of the other ones under there too. So you see a little bit of pickup during those hours, um, and we certainly can do that. Um, it's just if there aren't enough available officers to really work that because they're on calls or assisting other agencies or what have you, then it makes it a little bit difficult to do some of those enforcement, uh, details as well. Um, some of the things certainly that we can do is utilize our grants that we receive from GOSH. Those are usually at specific times on speed details that we, we do, and we can isolate into those areas as well. So you certainly have a great point to say, can we do it? We can do it if that's what you decide to do. Uh, we certainly would throw every available resource that we could at that particular time to do it.
Good, uh, Africa, thank you. Very good comment. And the thing is, I think we should, uh, the, the, the public should see our, our, our officers out there. And I think, um, especially County Twenty-two, I think we need to do a presence there and make sure that our speeders, uh, are aware that, uh, uh, you cannot be going forty-five, fifty, uh, twenty-five, uh, or thirty-five. So, uh, just, I think that's a, that's a good idea. So I think we should actually do random, uh, um, locations and actually start enforcing them. So, uh, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Um, Lee, comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, Mayor. So Chief, um, could there be a possibility of, if we were to up the speed to thirty miles per hour, uh, keep the truck speed, uh, at twenty-five?
That would be confusing.
That, i- it would be, but great, great thought, um, because there are times as far as highways are concerned that the state would regulate an eighteen-wheeler, uh, being a sixty-five, whereas us residents could go seventy-five. Uh, there are portions of Arizona that are still there, uh, that limit that as well. But for the most part, uh, most of the speed limits now between fifty-five, sixty-five, seventy-five on highway is speeds for everybody. California, a little bit different. Seventy-five, sixty-five, truck traffic is usually fifty-five to sixty-five. Um, and honestly, I, I mean, I'll, I'll try to answer that from a first, personal perspective. The eighteen-wheelers pretty much are the ones, at least when I've passed them or have seen them, are pretty much adherent to the twenty-five. Simply because they travel that all the time and they know there's a stop sign at Sixth, Eighth and Tenth. So they're pretty good. I know that when I used to be on patrol five years ago, I would sit on Eighth Avenue and U Street. And one of the big things was the stop sign violations with people, uh, coming through the stop signs at twenty and thirty miles an hour. Cause they didn't even know that there was a stop sign there. So it's possible, and I probably would have to get with K and Legal to find out if we can legally do that. Uh, that would be research that I think that we would have to do. But i- if it's possible to do that legally, that is an option that you may be able to look at.
Thank you. Um, I know one of the projects for the, with the property tax, um, initiative was, uh, create a, a road that connects, um, U Street all the way out to Avenue F. If we were to get the funding to get that road up, what's gonna be the speed limit there? We're gonna keep that road at twenty-five?
No, I think from the original plans, from what I saw, I think that that road, um, would actually be because it would domain thoroughfare. So you would have something that would be like Cesar Chavez between Tenth Avenue, Avenue F, uh, and, and Avenue E, which is posted at fifty miles an hour. Then when you get a little past Avenue F, it's posted at fifty-five until you get to the sixty-five. So I think that once that would come into, uh, uh, being, you have a straight thoroughfare that you could look at forty-five to fifty miles an hour. I think would be more depending on how close it is to the residential area and where that road's going to go. You may be able to bump it up, uh, to fifty-five, but only if we've got the clearance from the residential areas that we possibly would need to do that.
So it will, it will eventually go up in the, in that road?
I'm sorry.
Read is built?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So it'll eventual- like the speed limit will eventually go up whenever that road is built?
Yeah, I mean, uh, on U Street, you mean the speed limit going up once that road is built? I would say no, because it's residential. But the speed limit, if you, if it came from behind the residential areas on Sixth Avenue, uh, which I think from my, um, recollection was where it was kind of designed, it would go to the backside of the residential areas, uh, out past Tenth, out past, uh, F Residential and come connect into somewhere out by the commercial port of entry. There is a possibility, I think, that that could be a fifty, fifty-five mile an hour speed limit. Um, as far as that's concerned, but we'd have to do the legal, uh, research into that and Illochio may have an answer to that.
Uh, good evening again. Uh, so just to clarify, the proposed, uh, connection of County Twenty-Fourth Street to Tenth Avenue, so it would be U Street and then south on Tenth Avenue to County Twenty, um, Fourth. And then along the twenty, County Twenty-Fourth alignment east to connect to County Twenty-Fourth paved area. Uh, um, just about a little bit less, or actually a little bit less than half a mile from Avenue F. So it would be connecting to County Twenty-Fourth Street and And from the design, the design, I mean, we can go high on the speed limit as a straight shot. But you know, it wouldn't be too practical to go above 35 mile per hour, maybe 40 at the most, just because, because from, yeah, it's really, it's going to connect to a residential area, and then it's, I think, I believe it's 35 maybe east of Avenue E. I can't remember what's the posted speed on the area. But I think it's just to prevent having the confusion of going up and down on the speed limits. Unless we want to do the entire length all the way to Avenue D, 35, 40, 45, whatever we need to decide to change, it can be done. But you know, we are connecting to a residential area, about F and a half. Thank you.
So that would put it, once we connect to the residential area, that would put the speed limit down a little bit, simply because of the liability factor when it comes to that one, so.
Okay, well, no further questions. I believe council does not want to up the speed. So thank you for the presentation, Chief.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Luis. Those comments. And yeah, it is a topic that has been brought up, and it is something that we need to look at the limit eventually. Eventually, we are going to get it as big as Yuma. And I know Yuma has different speed limits for different areas, even at residential. So let's keep an eye on it, and very good, very good items. Thank you, Luis. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
We're going to go ahead now. Go ahead, entertain motion to adjourn.
A motion?
Second, Mr.?
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second, Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allos again. Allos again. Motion chair as well, guys. It's been almost three hours, and you guys take care and have a good night and be safe.
Thank you, Mayor. Likewise.